We'll call the July 15 Pennington County Commission meeting to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and we'll have a pledge led by Janet Saylor, County Treasurer.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
(inaudible) the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome back Janet. Next item on the agenda is to review and approve the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Oops, sorry.
Good morning, I'd like for the Board.
You are?
I'm George Farabee. I'd like for the Board to consider removing 18C from the agenda.
Eighteen?
Eighteen.
Remove it totally from the agenda?
Yes.
You can't do it. It's got to be 10:30 is planning and zoning and that's how it's listed for the timetable.
What's wishes the Board?
Well, I agree with Keon. We, that, the, planning and zoning is scheduled for 10:30. What if people show up for this and we've removed it?
Well, why would we remove it for, I mean, we don't have any reason to remove it.
No.
Business that we need to take care of.
I don't think we can consider it till 10:30.
I, as Chair, I would make a ruling that we will not consider that item until 10:30. So we'll move forward.
That wasn't the question though, was it George? You wanted it removed altogether and not discussed today.
That's correct, yes. That's correct, thank you, yes.
So, would the Board care to make a motion to state their position?
As far as, as...
I'd make a motion to deny the request to have item 18C removed from the agenda.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Okay, would you like to know the reason? I'd like for it to be pulled. That is a product of a group that wasn't properly constituted. According to SDCL 125-1, a task force is either created by statute, ordinance, or resolution. Doesn't think about motion. And as I recall last meeting, the task force, which now became a political subdivision of the state of South Dakota through you folks, created by motion, therefore was, that task force was improperly created, therefore their work was null and void. That's my rationale.
Anything further?
No. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item, well, is there anything further on the agenda?
We didn't have a motion to approve the agenda, we just had a motion.
Well, we haven't settled the matter of the agenda yet. Is there anything further on adding or removing items from the agenda? If not, do we have a motion?
I thought we already had one, didn't we? Motion to approve.
Oh, so you voted motion on a motion? God.
Do we what?
We already had a motion to approve the, but we haven't voted on it.
I don't think it was seconded, was it? It wasn't seconded.
Oh, okay.
I saw, I make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda.
Good morning Commissioners, Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today, the consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of July 1, 2014. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $3,160,616.36. Acknowledgement of disinternment permit number 965831. Number eight is approval of the year 2014 Emergency Management State and Local Agreement addendum, accepting the 2014 Emergency Management Performance Grant Award as submitted by Emergency Management. Number nine is approval of the third quarter State and Local Agreement, the SLA report as submitted by Emergency Management. And finally, number 10 is to recognize the volunteers for the county for the month of June 2014 as submitted by the Human Resource Department.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed? If not, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item 11, Planning Commission Members Interviews and Appointments. And I would inform you of the process that has been put in place and carried out. Each of the applicants, we have four, were provided with copies of the questions that Commissioners asked at their last interview. And rather than go through that exercise, we afforded the applicants the opportunity to respond either in writing or in person to those questions. Holly will review for you the circumstances in terms of those applicants and begin by reading the first applicant's answers, who is, he's not present at this time.
Sure, I did contact the four applicants last week and submitted the questions to them and asked them to prepare their answers and come to you today with that. One applicant, the name is Mr. Ron Roskneck. He was out, or is currently out of the state and was unable to submit any additional questions or answers to the questions that you guys have. I did receive another applicant's answers. That applicant was Sig Sivennix, who is a current Planning Commission member, and I will read his answers for you.
Holly, before you do that, the, the question of, for example, those applicants who are here.
Yes.
Can present theirs orally?
Yes, we did have two other applicants, Mr. Jack Brad and Ms. Barb Landers. Two other applicants that should be here and can answer those for you in person.
Thank you.
Okay, the first question that we have for the Planning Commission members is to please explain your interest and our motivation in serving on the Planning Commission. Mr. Sivennix's answer to this is, I believe, is it important for citizens to participate in their government process and volunteer some of their time being involved? I am currently on the county's Planning Commission and with my engineering background, believe this is a position where I can best contribute based on my knowledge and experience. I believe the planning process is important and I enjoy the intellectual exchange of thoughts on the more challenging issues that come before the Planning Commission. Question number two, what is your example of the best county and why? A county government that protects the safety and well-being of its citizens and provides for orderly development without being overly burdensome on the rights of the property owner. To some degree, planning and zoning needs to be consistent and predictable so someone purchasing a property, they expect to be residential, doesn't end up after the purchase having a garbage dump or an industrial complex come in next door. However, a county also needs to recognize and adapt to the changing values of its citizens and recognize the distinct variations that exist in different parts of that county. Question number three is please identify what you feel are some key issues facing Pennington County in the next five to 10 years. And Mr. Sivennix's response is, Pennington County and the Black Hills will continue to have steady growth due to the desirability of the area and I believe will be impacted by the developing oil and mining industries to the north and south of us. Continued proper planning will be critical to maintain orderly and reasonable development. There has not been recent pressure for large mining activities in Pennington County, but that could change in the coming years. Currently, Ellsworth Air Force Base appears to be safe from closure, however, with changing military priorities, that could change and have significant impact on the county. I believe the county needs to update its comprehensive plan and some ordinances to fully, to more fully recognize the distinct differences between the county's western Black Hills area and the eastern plains and ranch lifestyles. I also believe as Rapid City and other communities within the county continue to grow, it will be more important than ever to consider establishing joint jurisdictional boards or committees. Question number four, do you feel as a resident of the county that you are able to provide objective recommendations on various land use applications and other issues? Why? His answer is yes. As an engineer, I have been taught to evaluate options and be creative with possible solutions. I also believe my direct involvement as a former City of Rapid City employee in the Public Works and Growth Management Departments, as well as currently serving on the county's Planning Commission, has furthered my understanding of the need to be open-minded and objective in reaching a solution. And finally, question number five, what other information would you like to share with the Commission that hasn't been addressed in the questions already? And his response is, though I grew up in eastern South Dakota, the first time I visited Rapid City and the Black Hills, I felt like it was home. I'm glad I had the opportunity to attend college here and especially glad my family had the opportunity to return to this area 22 years ago. It is home and I plan on retiring here. I have served on the county Planning Commission for the last three years and previously served approximately 10 years ago. I've enjoyed the process and my service and would like to continue on the Planning Commission if that is the desire of the county Board. I would hope that the county Board has found my participation in the process to be fair-minded and reasonable in the decision-making process towards the goal of orderly growth and development for the benefit of the citizens of the county. And that's submitted by Sig Sivennix.
Thank you, Holly. I would point out that we do have a printed copy of Ron Roskneck's initial application that does provide information about him so that Commissioners can evaluate it and certainly were he able to answer the questions, I'm sure that would be beneficial. But at this point in time, that's the circumstance that we're dealing with. So our next, I don't know, we didn't draw straws for Barb and Jack. Yes.
Can I go first? We have an oil service.
Yes, come forward and identify yourself and tell us what you want us to hear.
Good morning, I'm Jack Brad and have residence near Keystone. I don't know how to handle this for sure, but I have the answers to the questions. Holly's already read the questions and I guess you have those. My response to question number one is after the problems I've had with my business recently, which all of you are well aware of, I became very interested in planning and zoning and how, how the Commission works. I am still, I guess, a bit in awe as to how something like what happened to us can occur to an individual or a business in Pennington County. And so I guess I would have to say my motivation is to see that something like that doesn't happen to someone else. Question number two, my example of the best county would be one where the county government would help and not hinder its citizens. One where there is only necessary ordinances and regulations and low taxes. Why? Because I think the people would be happy there. Number three, perhaps the most important issue for the future is how much control Pennington County extends over the lives of its citizens. I fully realize there must be a proper balance between what is needed and necessary and what is not. Another issue I think that will probably face the county in the future is what happens when the federal funds run out on these projects that we're now currently collecting money Number four, my answer is yes. I have a small business, or am a small business owner in rural Pennington County and have been for 37 years. As a current rural resident and property owner, I believe people in like positions must have similar concerns regarding issues and their effects. And I believe that most of you would probably agree that people living in rural Pennington County are proud, self-reliant, and independent. They reject unnecessary rules, regulations, and ordinances that affect their livelihoods and way of life. And finally, my answer to question number five is, I believe the Commission needs to be very careful regarding decisions they make which affect individual personal property rights. The issue of agritourism needs to be addressed and incorporated as a permanent use in the A1 agriculture districts as it relates to planning and zoning. I am also very curious as to why in some instances, Pennington County ordinances exceed requirements of the state of South Dakota laws. And I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next applicant is Barb Landers.
I have a copy of the questions. I didn't bring mine. Thanks. Okay, good. Well, the reason why I volunteer to serve on the committee is the same one that I offered to you three years ago. I think it is important that citizens become involved in government and not just sit on the sidelines and watch. And this is one way that I can do that. Best county? When I first read that question, I thought Maui, maybe, you know? But seriously, I think a county that protects the rights of the citizens, particularly the property rights, with the least amount of rules and the smallest tax burden is the county that I would like to live in. I also think that the rules should be consistent and equally applied. I think some of the key issues that we're coming up with is the encroachment of the federal government with rules and regulations, particularly in relation to water issues. And I think that Pennington County and other counties and the state should be very vigilant about this and protect our rights and our citizens' rights to their private property Yes, I think I can be objective. I hope so. I mean, we all come with a set of ideas and opinions, but I think that as a reasonable person, I can be objective on the various issues that come before the Commission. We are all restricted by the laws that are in place, all of us that serve, and we have to follow those laws that are already in the zoning booklet. And it is only the Commissioners, you, the Commissioners, that are in a position to change those. So sometimes things have come before the Commission that I would like to have gone a different way, but the law must be followed. The last thing, that last question, I would hope that when you make your appointments, you would think about the need to have a varied group of people on the Commission. That right now, we have really, I think, a wonderful group of people serving. And it's been a privilege these last three years to serve with all of them. But we are a little bit overloaded with Engineers. And Engineers are very, very valuable. And I would hate to see a Commission that did not include at least one or more because they have knowledge that many of the rest of us do not. But I also think it is important to have just folks and from very geographic districts, if possible, within our county. That's about it. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Barb. Next process is to make our selection and...
Are we just going to write down two names on a piece of paper or?
I, I would recommend that we use the process of a Commissioner nominating someone and having a vote on that particular one. So if someone wishes to make a nomination, we're open for that.
Mr. Chair, I would nominate Sig Sivennix.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on Sig and we will have a voice vote, or a roll call vote.
Westgrue?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Holloway?
Yes.
Shadman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Sig has been reappointed. We're open for any other nominations.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think in one of these instances, experience does count a little bit because it does take a while to learn the ropes of planning. There's a lot of ordinances and I'm going to nominate Barb Landers.
I'll second that. Roll call vote. Motion and a second to nominate Barb.
Westgrue?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Holloway?
Yes.
Shadman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Congratulations, Barb. That closes the process.
Mr. Chair.
Next item is...
Mr. Chair, before we get off that topic, I guess I would just like to acknowledge that the people are volunteering their time for this and it was great to have a choice. I think the other two people, as I listened to their presentation and also read the information, hopefully they'll still be interested in the next round of appointments that come up.
You bet. Good point. Certainly thank all the applicants. Next item is item 12, the 2015 Pennington County Provisional Budget Presentation by Deputy Auditor Peterson.
Good morning. KJ Peterson, Deputy Auditor. We have provided the Board with a cover letter outlining the proposed 2015 budget with the changes that were discussed at the budget hearing a week ago Monday. I believe all the Commissioners and many, many, if not all, Department Heads were at that meeting. And to highlight the changes that were applied from that meeting, the 1.4% COLA remained the same from the initial recommendations for 15. The wage scale was amended to the merit steps being reduced from what has been in the past a 2.5% increase, taking that and down to a 1.25% merit increase. And those changes have been supplied by the departments. The healthcare premium increases did not change, but they came in a little bit late from initial provisional budget, so this does include all of those. The request for reserves to 18% from the previous 20% in the County General Fund. The reserve balances in County Fire were reduced by $69,599, this being the first step to a goal of the 18%. The long-term reserves in accumulated building, which we will need motions on, dissolve the previous assigned monies for the Health and Human Services Building and the Equipment Reserve. The tax increases were limited to only new construction or growth dollars for most of the taxing funds, of course, the primary one being the General Fund. The General Fund used $1,843,193 less than the dollar amount allowed by the growth. County Fire used the $69,599 less than was allowed by the growth. And the County Library Fund used all the taxing authority available from growth, also from the CPI and the stored CPI, to bring the cash balance in just the County Library Fund up for the future contract needs. There is some key pages in the means, in the budget that Julie wanted you to especially focus on, the means of finance for growth only, the cash analysis, and the budget summary and revenues. That brings us to the final recap of a total provisional budget, $86,292,199, $40,853, $963 of that is miscellaneous revenues, which leaves the remaining applied as $36,556,434 in tax revenues and $12,68,064 in cash reserves applied. And the factor then on the 5% uncollected taxes, which of course were required in the process of the calculation, is at $3,186,262. We have a few motions that the Board will either need to make today or schedule a final meeting if in fact they're not ready to make that motion today. We'll have to have that meeting by the last day of July according to statute. But assuming that the Board doesn't need to schedule that meeting, we'll have at least two motions. They're outlined in the letter and are rather lengthy, have to use all the proper language that we, is required in the, in the approval of the provisional budget. The second motion would be to dissolve those assigned reserves that are in the accumulated building. Again, I referenced that to the Health and Human Services Building. And the Equipment Reserve, if those are dissolved, they will just... If those are dissolved, they will just go away as assigned funds and increase the restricted fund balance in accumulated building by that almost $2.3 million. And lastly, if the board chooses to make a motion to acknowledge or establish a policy with the recommendation of the 18% reserve that they support, no longer granting supplements in the next budget year from overcollected, underspent budgets, if, in fact, the goal of the 18%, which the board has now chosen, the people coming in at the end of every year asking for leftover revenues and unspent budget will be defeating the purpose of the 18% goal. Whether the board just wants to acknowledge that, make a motion, that's totally up to you. But as Julie outlines in her letter, she hopes that some acknowledgement of that policy is set.
Any questions or comments from the board?
So, KJ, I understand that if we want to make any changes to this budget, then we have to schedule another meeting.
For the provisional budget, of course, remember that this is just the provisional budget, which always gives the board opportunity between approved provisional at the end of July to make changes before the final budget is adopted at the end of September.
Okay.
So you kind of have two options. There's two full weeks left in the month of July, plenty of time for more discussion and plenty of time to notice. If, in fact, for instance, you wanted to have a meeting on the 29th, two weeks from today, you'd still be statutorily within the time that you need to do that.
I just noted that we had missed one of the cuts that we made in...
We can make any changes that the board's in agreement on as well today.
From our last meeting.
And which one was that, Sheriff, Commissioner Holloway? I'm sorry.
That's all right. You're always supposed to refer to the highest rank of personnel. I would put the sheriff above the commissioner. It was in the County Fire's budget. We had pulled out the vehicle.
I believe that that is included in the $69,599, is it not, Denny?
That was my understanding. I thought it was pulled out and then not pulled out.
Nope.
The direction given.
I voted for it right after I voted against it.
And so is the direction given with the pull to the $69,599?
No, it's still sitting in his capital assets line on his budget, if I understand that.
For 2015.
Denny, is that correct?
That was my understanding, Denny. It was left, yeah.
Okay, and that wasn't my understanding. It should have been out.
Yep.
But it's that $80,000 that's in your capital assets line item that includes the vehicle, right?
I have to look.
Okay.
So do we...
So the $352,701 that's in the pink on the Means of Finance includes $80,000 for a vehicle?
Not $80,000 for a vehicle.
Sixty...
It was like...
Forty-five.
Oh.
So do we want to have them redo this for the provisional budget or pass the provisional budget and take it out the first meeting in August?
The budget could be approved today, less the $45,000 with included in the motion. And when Julie gets back, she'll update these and send them out, include those numbers in the motions. But since, if it was just one simple adjustment like this, we could surely do that for provisional and not meet again and not have to remember it for September.
Okay. Was it $45,000, was it $45,000 even?
Yes.
All right, I would, I would, I would make a motion to take $45,000 out of the County Fire's budget for the provisional budget.
Is there a second?
That would be the capital.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion or clarification? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Do you want to...
Based on...
Word the motion relative to the Accumulated Building Fund?
I think it's written out here, so if you like, I would make that motion. The motion would be to dissolve of reserves in accumulative building as follows. Move to dissolve the assigned reserve for the Health and Human Services Building in the amount of $2,221,666.67, and the Equipment Reserve in the amount of $46,687. Both will revert to the cash balance in the Accumulative Building Fund for future projects yet to be determined.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would just, for clarification for the public and for maybe some of the staff as it relates to the Health and Human Services Building, we have put this money aside when we were negotiating with the community health to do a joint project with them. That project has dissolved, or they're moving forward without us. So we still have the need to do something for Health and Human Services Building space, but we don't need, we don't have that identified yet at this time. So moving this back into the General Accumulative Building Fund for future projects would be the appropriate place to keep the money.
Thank you. Any further comments? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And last of all, I don't know if the board is, wants to perhaps think about it or consider some kind of motion, maybe for annual, about the 18% reserve goal and how it relates to budget supplements from year-end, overcollected revenues. And it's kind of like that motion we had years ago where we had a motion that supported salaries, and sometimes it's good to have that motion when somebody comes in and says, "But why?" This is the goal of the commission, is to wait till we get to that October. And we had this discussion, if you might remember, at the December meeting when we had so many supplements, and then they come in at the end of the year. And so, kind of up to the board, maybe something they just want to think about in the next month or two and work it into final. But Julie wanted you to especially be aware of the auditor's office's thoughts on how that's all going to play out and work well.
Mr. Chair, one of the things I want to remind the commission of is that we have urged departments to make changes at the end of the year. If they are encountering some issues with their budget, we say, "Come in at the end of the year." So there is that partially part of the reason that we do get those kinds of requests at the end of the year. And I want to temper it, the explanation that perhaps the public is hearing in that sometimes they are requests at the end of the year based on direction from the commission, knowing that it's a legitimate expense and that it's something that they had not anticipated. Those are things that we have directed them to handle at the end of the year. And I would not want to make a motion...
I understand.
Where we would create that, an issue with that sort of thing. However, the 18%, we're dropping that. It's helping in many different ways to minimize some of that, I think. And I do believe we, we need to make sure how we make a motion or we put forth our belief in a, in a statement saying this is how it will be from now on. But just, just want to remind everybody, sometimes it's our direction that means that supplement request...
It's obvious already in 2014 in a lot of ways because you haven't seen, seen me up here every budget or every commission meeting asking for varied supplements. And sometimes, you know, the grant ones and unexpected expenses, things arise like that. A lot of times, the unexpected expenses early on to mid-year, rather than doing the supplement right then, waiting to see how much of it can perhaps be absorbed through some attrition that always happens with your FTEs or even other expenses. But I believe that we're at supplement number four in 2014, which is very nice. So you are well on that way. Julie is certainly not saying, "Tell them one more time," but maybe kind of sort of tell them one more time at the same... Sure. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You know, I would just say in response to Mr. Tropman's comments that that's what we have our contingency fund for, is for those, those unexpected expenses. And having them come in at the end of the year is a good idea because if, if, in fact, they, they have money left over in their budget, then they don't need this supplement just because some new expense come up. But, you know, I think, I think it is a good idea to lower the reserves down to 18% because that way then we're not overtaxing the taxpayers to accumulate a large reserve and, and to discourage the use of overcollected revenues or underspent budgets for the next year's budget. I mean, that's what, that's what we were doing was, was supplementing the next year's budget with those, with those items. And so we just need to encourage the department heads and elected officials to, to think more about their long-term budget needs, put them in the budget when we're addressing it. And I know that's difficult because I've been there, because you're putting a budget together, you know, many times 18 months before you spend the last part of the budget. So it's, it, it does take some forethought.
One of the things that we discussed last week with budgets that are now building into their budget, some of those line items for future expenses that aren't going to happen in one year, that probably will come in, you know, right away in the first or second meeting of the year and ask the board to move those to, to the assigned reserves rather than waiting till year-end. You might remember, we did do a supplement, I think in about April or May for some money that was in IT's budget, their $20,000. So we're thinking timing-wise, we will bring those to the board early on, get them out, then they're there, and then at whatever point, whether it is the next year or two when they've accumulated enough, or if some type of emergency happens in that same year and they say, "Oh, I need that money," then we would come back with it. And that way, as you move forward already into that 2015, March, April, May 2015, when you're thinking about 2016, that money's already out of there too. So that's our plan on this end.
I would make a motion. I'd make a motion to lower our reserves to the 18% and that we no longer grant supplements in the next budget year for, from overcollected revenues or underspent budgets, except in cases when non-estimated revenues receive that produced non-budgeted expenses in the same year.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And just to explain that last part of it, if, if a department receives a grant or receives some funds from another governmental agency in a given year, they didn't know they were going to receive it, didn't put it down as estimated revenues, and as a result of those funds received, there's a like amount of expenses, unexpected expenses showed up in their budget, then they can come forward and say, "I've got this amount of money, and here's the expenses that are going to go with it, and we can do those supplements." But just, just saving money to get it supplemented in the next year, we would discourage that or no longer support that. And encourage our, and I think by doing that, then we encourage the department heads and elected officials to look at their long-term needs and start building those reserves, just put it in the budget so that we can budget for it.
Any further comments relative to the motion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
We have...
Oh, we got one more motion?
One more, one more motion to approve the...
Well, I thought that, I thought that, that Dawn included that with the 45. I thought you included that with the 45, so...
Provisional budget?
Mm-hmm.
Haven't done that one yet.
Oh, I thought, I thought that it was incorporated into the whole thing. Okay, so yes, we do have the, the, the motion then for the provisional budgets, which we will list the amounts above less the $45,000. For the, the $86 million, that won't change revenues. It will change a little bit on tax revenues and the 5% only in the Fire Fund where we took that $45,000 out. And that the motion would be... Where does this start?
To approve the provisional budget with those changes?
Yes.
That's, that's the motion.
Yeah, that, that rather lengthy one in the request, I was trying to figure out where she actually start. The Board of Commissioners will meet, we've done, oh, the motion would be that the Board of County Commissioners of Pennington County will meet in the County Commission Meeting Room located in the County Courthouse at 315 St. Joseph Rapid City on Tuesday, September 2nd, 2014, at 10:00 a.m. for the purpose of considering the provisional budget with the numbers listed above, less those adjustments for the $45,000 from Fire. For the year 2015, various items, schedules, amounts, and appropriations set forth there end and as many days thereafter as is deemed necessary until final of the adoption of the budget, no later than September 30th. Any person may appear either in person or by representative and will be given an opportunity for full and complete discussion of all purposes, objectives, items, schedules, appropriations, estimates, amounts, and matters set forth. And then we'll include our ADA policy in that as well.
Mr. Chair.
And then just as a reminder to the board, by making this motion today with the adjustment for Fire allows the board to change between now and September 30th on anything that they choose to discuss. If we have a new grant come in quickly in August, sometimes they seem to happen in this, in this July-August period. It can be added before we do the final approval at whatever meeting in September after that one that is included in the motion on the 2nd. You can have as many budget hearings as you want between September 2nd and the 30th to get to a final budget.
But I don't see where this, I mean, this announces when we will be looking at the final budget, but it doesn't say we actually adopt this as a provisional budget.
Yes. Motion for provisional budget adoption as follows...
But it doesn't say anywhere that we today adopt this as our provisional budget.
I believe that the language when we get to September is to adopt the final budget.
Right. But today, don't we adopt this as provisional?
We can, we can do that, make...
We always have before.
Yeah.
We've not done all of this announcing.
That's part of our legal requirement.
Yeah. I think we may, she may not always had that as the lengthy motion. I think she may not always had that as the lengthy motion that I just read, but in the minutes, it's been properly recorded that way. So. I think she pulled this stat, it looks like she pulled this statutory right out of the books, so.
Which I'm fine with, I just think that we need the language that says we are adopting this as a provisional budget, which is my motion.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Holloway?
Just a comment, I guess. With the provisional budget as we've got today, Pennington County's levy, consolidated levy is going down 5.160 percent. And so as far as the county's efforts in trying to hold the line on taxes, I think we've done a fairly decent job this year. Hopefully, the school system and the city will follow suit with an equal amount of reduction so that people can actually see their taxes go down.
Mr. Bussgrin?
Commissioner Holloway just stole all my, everything I was going to say. But our meeting the other day that we discussed budget items was very worthwhile. We chopped over two, about $2 million off of the original provisional budget, which I thought we did a very good job.
And one of the things that I would like to comment on is that I'd like to thank our department heads and elected officials because we really asked a lot of you in trying to lower taxes for the taxpayer, and still, we have to do what we have to do to provide the services. And you all work very, very hard, you are trying very hard to make that happen, and we really appreciate those efforts. You did a great job.
I would just comment that we recognize Holly and the Auditor Department for their efforts as well, and they work on the process a lot more than we do, and it's very much appreciated. Any further comments?
One thing to add to your thunder, Ron, that was a little stolen by Dawn, is I know you always liked to refer to that tax amount on $100,000, and as it sits right now, not incorporating in that small amount for the $45,000, that will adjust the $100,000 tax on the county consolidated portion of the levy will be down $26.90.
And just the other thing I like to remind everybody of, when we're talking about that we're cutting our budget, it is 25 percent of your property taxes.
So contrary to popular belief, or some belief, we didn't do too bad of a job, but neither did the department heads putting this all together.
If this motion fails. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, KJ. Next item is items from the Treasurer.
Good to see you back.
Thank you. Janet Saylor, Pennington County Treasurer. As the memo that I sent to the commissioners in regards to South Dakota Codified Law 1021 7.1, I am requesting that the commission allow me to proceed and write a resolution that the taxpayers of Pennington County, beginning January 1st, 2015, will be allowed to make payments on a monthly basis on their taxes by notifying the Treasurer in writing. We will do electronic transfers from their account, bank account, into our bank account in order to let them pay taxes on a monthly basis. It does require a resolution from the county commissioners. It will require some bookwork as far as the Treasurer's office is concerned. I am working with the bank and a couple other places to figure out totally how we're going to set this up. I don't have all the answers on that today, so I would just like to proceed at this point with the blessings of the county commissioners to get this in motion.
So your motion would be to.
To allow.
Authorize the drafting of a resolution?
The resolution, along with the requirements for the taxpayers, and at which time I would bring it back to the county commissioners once it's reviewed by our state's attorney's office, and at that time, we would go to the press and notify the public that it's out there, and that we are going to allow them to do that.
Mr. Chair, I really support this. One of the things that we hear when we go through our budgeting process is that we get our money in April and October, and there can be that kind of a tight time just before those are collected. And what this, when you allow people to make these monthly payments to us, what we're doing is beginning to help our cash flow and as it grows, because I believe it'll be a service that people will want to use. And then as that grows, there's a potential, large businesses like to have this kind of a service available because it does help their cash flow. Yes, there is a charge for it, I recognize that, but I think as a whole, it'll be worth it. Be sure to really negotiate with them that it's going to be a lot of people using this and that they should lower our rate.
And just for the commissioners' information, our tax deeds have grown. Over the last couple of years, we're doing a lot more research than we were before, we're selling a lot more properties. People are calling saying, you know, I really can't afford to pay this, but if I could make monthly payments. And I've told them, you're not going to get any interest on your money, that's not provided in law. And their response is, you know what, I can't save money, but if I gave it to you, my taxes would be paid on time, so.
Well, and the thing that, it really is going to be centered around you, and I've set these up when I was a banker, so I remember how this works, but when someone comes to your window and requests this and they fill out the form, you're going to go directly onto your bank account and set it up, and it'll be instigated or begun at the bank. So you're not going to be having to create any kind of new software or anything because it goes all through the bank.
And that's what we're working on now with the bank. I just don't have everything put together, but I didn't want to go to all the work and start it if the commission was not in favor of it.
Russ Tinsvold, IT Director. So Janet and I have been discussing this, and there is a component that we do have to write in-house software to make this work with our system.
Why would that be?
Because when you make, excuse me, when you make payments, they have to be applied internally to our system so that we know what taxes still do. So while they make the payment at the bank, and all of that is the bank's software where it takes it out of their account, et cetera, at some point, that, those monies have to come in here, it has to be put into our system, and because those systems are all applications that we have developed in-house and manage, I just wanted to make the commission aware that this means that we do have to build out some software. It's not anything, in the scheme of things, really large, we're very capable of doing it, but I want to make you aware of it because you know for the last two years, we've been working to minimize the amount of in-house software that we have, and I wouldn't want it to be a surprise later when you look to see, how are we doing on minimizing that? And I come back to you and say, well, it grew a little bit. But Janet and I have discussed this, and we think that this is a fair trade because it is a good service to provide to the public, and our department is very capable of doing it. Just wanted you to be aware that there's an internal component.
Just to make sure, I think you want to look at that also from the bank end because they could send you an electronic, there could be some exchange of information that might help you with that, that would make it very simple.
And we already do that with the bank processing that Janet already does, so this would be very similar to what's already done, just on more of an individual basis.
Right, but I mean, just having known the backend is set up, and I'm sure it's changed, but I just think there's probably a real easy way to do it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Janet or Russ, either one, is this going to require any more employees in IT or in the Treasurer's office to do this bookkeeping and keep track of all of these payments that are coming in?
Absolutely, not in my office.
And no for IT?
Okay.
About interest, we're going to have to pay interest on that money?
No. We do not have to pay interest on the money. It's already set up, the other county that's using it, the only other county is Brown County, and they are up to 500 people now. Do I look for it to be that huge in Pennington this year? No. But I think it's going to grow. But no, they do not get interest on their money.
It goes directly into your checking, usually.
Right, it goes directly into our checking account.
Anything further?
Chair, I'd make a motion to authorize the Treasurer to proceed with the research of how the program will work and a resolution.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Now, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is item 14. Abatement application, abatement applications.
Morning Commissioners, Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. You have three abatement requests before you this morning. Two of them are the same property owner, so two property owners. The two parcels are abatement requests for the 2013 year for the Wyn Gunderson property. This is a property that was one parcel that was replatted and split into two. The property has a home on it, was owner occupied prior. When the plat created two new parcels, the owner occupied classification was dropped. State law specifically requires that if a plat takes place that changes the legal description and identity of the property, that the owner occupied classification should follow through to the new property. And in this case, it didn't. It is, it's common sense that it should, it's much more difficult to actually make that happen in a practical process. The property owner brought this to my attention, and have an abatement request for that.
So as it relates to that, how does he have owner occupied on two separate parcels then?
The two parcels sit next to each other.
Yeah, leaving both of them.
We apply an owner occupied classification to the parcel next to the home parcel if that parcel is used as a larger yard or something. If it is still the home site, we do not apply it if it's a lot across the street or across town or something like that, or if the adjoining lot is used for some other purpose.
Well, how big is the adjoining lot?
I don't know.
Valued at $95,000, it's not a small lot.
There are a couple acres each, a few acres each. This is in the Heisega area, it's a valuable property. It started out something, let's say like 10 acres, and split into two then.
There's a statute that says I can have owner occupied on this parcel, and if I own the lot next door to me, I can get owner occupied on that one too.
The owner occupied statute says that it applies to the tax parcel where the residence is located and is used for, is used as an owner occupied residence.
Okay, but the vacant lot next door that I own?
Gray area in the law. Pennington County has always applied it to the lot next door on all properties if it is still part of the home site.
Well, obviously, it's not if it was subdivided.
There's a reason for subdividing, is what you're saying.
Yeah, there's a reason for subdividing.
I don't know what the reason of split was.
Well, which one is the, which one is the land, is the $95,000 one?
That is a bare land parcel. If there's buildings on it, they're minimal, and I don't think there is. The home site is located on the parcel with the larger value, which is 686,000.
I'd make a motion to deny the abatement on tax ID number 64369.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, and that applies to the vacant lot, is that?
That's my understanding, that's what the gentleman is telling me.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I don't necessarily disagree with this, but how many other properties do we have in Pennington County that we've already done this with?
That'll be my next motion, to have him bring forward all of the vacant lots that we've got owner occupied status on.
I guess I have a question in terms of owner occupied, does it apply strictly to dwellings? Or does it apply to bare land?
The residence that is occupied by the owner and the land that it sits on. So a city lot or 20 acres.
And then.
And the residence and the garage.
So if that's the criteria or the classification, then bare land wouldn't even be considered in owner occupied or not owner occupied, would it?
No, it is either owner occupied or not. There's no other classification, it's either owner occupied or not.
But do you even consider the question of owner occupied on bare land?
When, only when it is an adjacent parcel that is considered the home site. Think of a city lot, a home in Rapid City that sits on a 50-foot lot, and the lot next door is yard.
Is that in state law or is that a policy?
That's policy of Pennington County. It is common throughout South Dakota, the law says the home and the land that the home sits on.
Jay, do you have any input?
Yeah, we can certainly, we can certainly come back with a statute and more information.
Okay, so if it's a research question, the motion that we have specifically relates to the bare land, and if we want to foster some research in the future, apart from this particular motion and issue, we can do so, right? So let's, any further discussion on the motion? If not.
If I might, I'd like to, excuse me, I'd like to. To throw something into the mix, nothing that makes any difference on the taxation necessarily, but I'm in four parcels, they're all contiguous, and one of those parcels I have a building in, I have my barns in there, different section. So it's not parcel by subdivision, that's why I bought the property, I'm in four sections. So I have four ID numbers, four tax ID numbers. Now, I don't know how it affects the taxation, home occupied or owner occupied or otherwise, but I live in one section, my barn's in another section. Thank you.
Well, if we gave you owner occupied on all your property, you'd lose your ag status and your taxes didn't go up, so we could do that too.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
What's the motion one more time?
To deny the request on 64369.
If you research and find that information contrary to what our motion is?
If I may suggest, perhaps under the circumstances, you want to continue this item to the next meeting, so we can have an opportunity to research it and then let you know to the best of our ability what our opinion is.
There is no reason the abatement has to be done this meeting. The property owner would probably wish it be done soon, but he still has a second half tax bill coming up in October, so there is time.
So, Mr. Chair, I would make a substitute motion that we continue the decision on tax ID 64369 until we can research.
Just?
Second.
Excuse me, your motion is just for this one item?
Just because that's all we've been dealing with, we weren't, we haven't made a motion on the other two parcels yet.
Well, I guess the question would be if we just?
Just do the whole thing, wait?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that a problem?
Same issue in the next one, or?
You've got two other parcels there. Wyn Gunderson has a parcel with his home on it, same situation, it was owner occupied prior, the property split into two. I don't see that it's the same issue, and then we have a mobile home that's completely different.
So, I will withdraw, and if, do we have a second to that motion?
I think Ron said.
Ron did.
I did.
Okay.
And I'm gonna make a motion to amend the substitute. To include in that the approval of 8006484 and 64370. As well as the continuation of the first one.
I'll second his amendment.
Second, the amended amended?
Okay, so we have an amendment to the substitute motion, all in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now we have a substitute motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Would the Commission like me to come back next meeting with the owner occupied information?
Is that too soon?
No, that's fine.
And it'd be nice to know how many vacant lots we've got owner occupied on.
I'll do that.
Okay, thank you. Next item is item 15, items from the Highway Department. And Tom, last time I said your name, I said Wilson, and it should have been Wilsey, I apologize.
You did not correct, yeah. Tom Wilsey, Highway Department. I am requesting authorization to go to letting for several Sanders and plows. On October 15th, the 2013 Board of Commissioners approved buying of three chassis for the Highway Department, but the support equipment was not on that. So I'm requesting the three 880-inch long stainless steel Sanders, three 12-foot plows, and three 8-foot mid-mount wings for those three chassis. Also, in our inventory, we have 17 Sanders, five of which are deteriorating to the point that they're almost unusable. Actually, two of them are unusable right now. I would like to replace those five plows. Two of the five that we are going to bone pile, we could possibly put together and get one out of it to use as a backup center when others break down. These old plows are 10 to 14 years old and have rusted through because they're made with mild steel rather than stainless steel. Stainless steel plows, for your information, will last about 20 years.
Good. I'm gonna motion to allow them to, for authorization to bid on the Sanders, plows, and wings. I think one of our major jobs in the county is keeps snow off the roads.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Tom, I see in here that this state doesn't have a bid out that's usable on any of this, and we don't either. Is there any problem with inflated prices on these things if we do it now, or?
If we do a bid letting, we'll get the good price for them, I'm sure. The state bid will not be applicable till September, and if we wait till their bid letting, we won't get the plows until February.
Mr. Chair. Are we adding, are we adding this, or is this replacement equipment?
The three trucks, the way I understand it, there's two of them that we're salvaging, are going to be selling. The third one, we're possibly, we're looking at making a water truck out of it. That's the three chassis that we bought in, in last year in October 13, 15.
But with the equipment that you're buying here, the Sanders and all that, is that, are you adding this, or is this just replacement?
This is to go with these trucks, yeah, we're adding them. The old Sanders that we had are rusting up and falling apart.
We're really replacing those.
Because the plows and all of those things are transferable, aren't they, to put on the?
Some are, some are not, depends on the mounts on the plows. Some of the plows that we have will probably have to go with the trucks when we sell the trucks for salvage. They get beat up too.
Anything further?
And also, I know two of the trucks that we're getting rid of do not have wings on them. We're getting enough asphalt roads now that wings really speed up the process.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Tom, this is in, money's in your budget to handle all this?
We have money in the budget, it was not in our purchasing, equipment purchasing budget, but we do have money to cover.
That won't harm, won't harm any other project?
Not right now, no.
Any other comments? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Tom. Next item is item 16, human resource.
Good morning, Nick Strout, HR Director. What you have in front of you is a memo and a proposed policy regarding the Pennington County Employee ID Badge. How this came to fruition is working with Holly and the Commission Office and the Building Committee, and talking about our move to the new administration building, which won't have the guard station, spurred the discussion about safety. And the second piece of how we got here is the county obviously has grown, and so there was talk with some people who've been here a while, people like KJ and with Janet, and who are remembering back in the days when there were 200 people that worked for the county, and now as we're getting close to 700, people aren't as recognizable anymore. And so, as you're entering offices and coming and going, people aren't sure, are you a citizen, are you an employee, and things of that nature. So, that started the conversation that led us here. We've outlined in the memo some of the procedures that we envisioned, and then the policy which was put together, and so I would stand for any questions on this.
Are you proposing that they wear these badges exposed, or have, just carry them in their pockets?
Most people, we envision carrying in their pockets. I've talked with Scott and Wheaton Pest, and his idea was that his guys would carry them in their wallets, just in case they were ever to get stopped by landowners. They wouldn't be wearing them as lanyards. The Sheriff's Office already has this taken care of, so does the State's Attorney. IT's currently doing this, as well as the Commission Office. Some people, like Holly and Jess, will wear them on lanyards for convenience, other people keep them on their person. So, it wouldn't be a forced, you have to wear it on a lanyard exposed at all times, but just an extra step to make sure people can be identified as a Pennington County employee when it's necessary.
So I have a question, as I was looking through the badge policy, how do we address? Well, one of the things I noticed under procedure, we're seeing that the ID badge request forms are located on the employee internet. Everybody would have access, every employee, to fill one of those out then?
That's already been set up by IT, so I wanted to thank Russ for that, but yes, a person could go on there and submit their request, any employee could.
I'm kind of not, I think security-wise, that leaves you open to have someone fraudulently do something. I think that you should have the department head responsible for their own department, and they should be the ones who are accessing that. You know, we have occasionally had some unfortunate situations with employees, and if they, every employee has access to that form, there could be some breach of security.
Yeah, we can restrict access.
I think you should.
This procedure was just going, that part of the procedure, we can fix that to get the current employees taken care of by only giving access to the department heads, and then the plan again in that first paragraph would be for, yeah, Jessica and I to do it as they come along, so it would be controlled through us, and we would control that. But yeah, we could definitely make that change.
I think initially, we need to make sure how we're doing that. Then the other question I had, we don't address here anything, and that's because I am very guilty of doing this. I forget my ID cards and stuff and my little, so what happens if they come to work and they don't have, how are you gonna handle that?
And that would have to be handled at apartment level, what their procedure, I wouldn't feel comfortable putting that into a policy that would say, you must go home and retrieve your badge and you don't get paid. I think that's more of a reach than what we were going for. We're just trying to find some way to, first, identify people in an official capacity, and second, to, well, yeah, like I stated before, so.
Do you envision somebody walking in by the auditor's office and the auditor jumping out saying, I wanna see your badge right now? You really, that's never gonna happen, you know?
I agree.
I mean, it's only 170 bucks, I don't care one way or the other, but I have a picture ID on me that I haven't used in four years. Whatever you wanna do.
You're more visible. We have people walking in, we've taken steps with the Treasurer's Office, for example, to try to limit the amount of people that were coming in, because new representatives from departments were coming in and dropping things off near the cash room, and Janet and her people didn't know who they were because they were new people. There was no way for them to identify themselves.
But if you don't make them wear them, then you think they're gonna stop them and say, hold it a second, who are you?
I imagine Janet would. If you know Janet, she will.
She does me too, that's why I carry mine.
I think the main thing here, Ron, is there's so many people going over there, we have 911, we have State's Attorney, we have Public Defender, you don't know those people. They're going to be, they're going to have access with their cards to go to all these departments, and quite frankly, I wanna know personally who's in my, who's in my area. I mean, I have a lot of money there. If they don't have a badge, or they don't have authorization to get in there, they don't have any business in there. And that's what they're trying to do, they're just trying to make sure that the people that are in the areas that they're in, that they are county employees, so.
So I always have to ask to go into your office, I don't have access.
Sure you do. Every Commissioner has access, alls they have to do is swipe their card.
I never has, and I don't care, I'm fine with that, but my point is, perhaps not everybody should be accessing everything, maybe that's more of the conversation, because we are going through a different kind of security situation over there, so.
Right now, we do have it programmable to where you can, only certain people can use their cards to get into Janet's office, not every employee can. So she can control that, but if there's no cards, then how does she control?
Well, and I get that, but I'm thinking that might be the other side of the conversation. If you go ahead and give a picture ID, okay, fine, but if they need to get into Janet's office, they show that, but their, their security card doesn't let them in.
The security card does let them in now, if they have access.
That's when, my point, that's my point, is maybe going over to the new building that should not be.
Is this the one you're gonna make?
No, that's an old version. We've never had anything formalized, we have to get back to have standardized programs, they're applied equally to everybody. I have no idea why you guys got those, you've never used them, I don't know why. Yeah.
Janet makes me show it whenever I go up your office.
We are all Pennington County employees, each department is doing their own thing, equalizations made their own, they have something different, the exterior is just different, we're trying to bring back the consistency.
And I agree with that.
So that everybody is easily identified.
Hey, Russ?
Russ Tinsel, IT Department. You know, this is a relatively small expense, and I think you're off talking about security, which is maybe a little bit different topic, like you mentioned, but I just wanna give you one example which might help you to say, that example is good enough to move forward with this. We have ID badges in the IT Department, we all have them, a lot of the staff wear them around their neck when they go to the jail, that helps, because once you're inside that secure facility for them to let you through doors, that helps them. For most employees, that doesn't apply. Where it does apply is when I'm walking in, the back door over here that only is for employees, and I use my key fob, and there's somebody right behind me, I've never seen them before, should I let them in, or should I say, I'm sorry, take a step back, I'm gonna lock this door and you're gonna have to come in? And I actually have had this happen many times, where I can show them I'm behind somebody, and they look at me like I have no idea who you are, I can show that ID badge, and they hold the door, and they let me in, and everybody feels good about it. In our new building, we're gonna have electronic access locks to a lot of sections. We have very few in this building, other than the exterior, we're gonna have a lot of those, so that is gonna happen 100 times as often, where somebody's going into a door, there's somebody right behind you, should I let them in, I don't know who it is. If they have that ID, it helps us all feel like it's okay for them to come in. So just that, and knowing that it's a relatively low expense, I hope is maybe enough to sway you that it's worth doing, and there's really no harm, even if it doesn't solve all security needs.
Hey, we have two more minutes to hash this over, so.
Mr. Chair, I go ahead and make a motion to proceed with the identification badge project.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Nick. Okay, item 17. Spring Creek Watershed and Implementation Project Plan, Commissioner Davis.
Mr. Chair, we didn't have any action on this the last time, we just left it as it was. I was talking with some of the department, the planning department and the folks that's in there. Also, it's my understanding that DNR would like to see this happen, to expedite the Spring Creek process as we go forward with it. And so I just put it on the agenda to talk about today, whether we, something we need to do to allow Planning and Zoning Director to sign off on these projects as they're presented by the Citizens Advisor Group. And if we do decide to do something today, I think we should not only have one line on there for the Planning Director to sign off, but I think the Chair should sign off on it also, along with him, and that's where I'm at. Discussion.
Any comments? This is an item we deferred on last meeting, one of three. What's your thoughts?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm not 100% sure we have the authority to delegate that, that spending, that money to the department head.
Now, that's one of the reasons why I would recommend that we put the Chair's signature on there with it, so, but that's, again, that's just discussion.
So, what we really need to do is have Jay research, whether we have that?
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out, it's, it's an important delegation of spending a lot of money.
Yeah, I know.
I don't see Jay in the room, so. Do you want to defer this, I guess?
Well, if, if we pass this motion to authorize the Planning Director and the Chairman to sign off, would it still come to the board then, like we get the vouchers to us, or does it?
Did it have to be? Yep.
Do you know?
It's the only way they'd ever get paid is if they came through the voucher system.
So, so it wouldn't be any different than the, the other budgets that we allow people, department heads, to sign off on?
Jay, do you see any problem on the 319 project if we allow this to the Planning Director to sign off on the projects along with the Chair's signature?
And not have the commission vote on it?
I feel like you need a little bit more information.
Well, the last meeting, we, we changed a couple of items in the Spring Creek program and then one we just left alone and that was everything come through the County Commission and voted on here to pay for projects that are being done.
So you had, you had the final review before a project gets funded?
Yeah, there was the request last time by Planning and Zoning to allow the Planning Director to sign off on these projects after the Citizens' Group recommended them and they were done. My suggestion is if we're going to do that, that we also have the Chair sign off on them also and then they come through the regular budgeting process and pay for it on the voucher system.
And if I re, yeah, Dan said, if I remember right, isn't, isn't that more like, I don't know about having the Chair sign, but isn't that more like what happens in other parts of the state? Is that they didn't all go to the County Commission, right? So your, your recommendation a couple of weeks ago was consistent with how this is handled in other areas of the state? Right? So in that regard, I, I don't see why there would be a, a problem in doing what you're talking about.
Mr. Chair, maybe we, maybe we should continue this for, to the next meeting, give Jay an opportunity to look it over. Probably also look at the formation of that task force. George Farabee had brought up that maybe there's a statute dealing with the formation of a task force and, and if, if we get to address, if we get to address both of those at the same time.
Is that a motion?
That would be my motion.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried.
I'm not opposed to this. I just.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion that we take a 10-minute comfort break.
Second.
Anyone that's uncomfortable, vote for this motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion carried.
I make a motion to go to Board of Adjustment.
Second. Motion is second to convene as a Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried.
Yes.
Dan?
Good morning. Dan Jensen, Pennington County Planning Director. Item A is a variance request 1420 for Mark Anderson, Anderson Rentals LLC, to reduce the minimum setback distance between units of mobile homes from 20 feet to 16 feet in a mobile home park to allow for a mobile home to be moved onto the property in a north-south direction. If the setback is approved, staff would recommend that one condition be attached. So this is located at 4818 Albert Lane, northeast intersection of Plateau Lane and Albert Lane. Back in 1993, they did get a conditional use permit for a mobile home park in this area. He had recently gotten demolition permits and removed two mobile homes and wants to bring in one mobile home in the opposite direction. It is a rather tight space and now he wants to, he took out the two and he wants to put this mobile home in the opposite direction from an east-west direction to a north-south. And with that, he bought a newer mobile home. He wants to just place a longer mobile home, which he's already purchased. When he bought it and tried to put it on the property, he realized that he's too close to the two adjacent mobile homes. Ordinance requires it to be a 20-foot separation. He will only have a 16-foot separation between the two mobile homes to the north and to the south by placing it in the opposite direction. If you were to go the other opposite direction, he'd be too close to the property lines and too close to the road. And he's actually reducing the number of mobile homes in this area and putting one that's a different one.
Since, I assume this is about fire. Does it really make much difference between 20 and 16 feet, Danny?
Well, and that's kind of the interesting point is suburban residential district actually allows for a 16-foot separation between homes and a mobile home park for some reason has a 20-foot separation. So it's actually no different than a residential zoning district. However, in a mobile home park, it's required to be 20 feet.
I'll make it short. With the approval of our fire coordinator, I'll make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
I'm sorry, I came in late, but I do have some questions. The 16-foot is, I mean, normally a mobile home is from the end of the tongue, the, to the back of the house. Is the 76.6 including that?
I believe in this case, it's a, a newer mobile home and it doesn't have a tongue. They take it off.
Oh, okay. You believe?
I'm not, I'm not sure if the applicant, that is the case?
Yep.
Okay, yes.
Okay, because sometimes that, that makes a difference on the actual legal length.
Any other questions, comments? I wasn't watching, Danny, did you shake your head yes or no when, when the question was asked about the fire coordinator?
County Fire has no objections to it.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Item B.
Item B is a variance request 14-21 for James and Julie Smorgowitz. This is to reduce the minimum required lot size from 40 acres to 3.75 acres in a general ag district. Staff would not recommend any conditions be attached if this variance is approved. This is located approximately one-half mile southeast of the intersection of South Highway 16 and Cosmos Road, currently zoned general ag district. They are looking to create this 3.75 acre parcel. They're buying it from the adjacent property owner. They are currently in process of buying the property to the north. They recently got approval of a conditional use permit for a recreational resort on this. They are in process of developing it at this time. They are, want to buy this in order to build a single-family residence. It would be separate from the recreational resort, but it would be right next to it, owned by the same people. It is part of the 40-acre tract of land owned by the neighbor. That parcel is part of three other parcels owned by the same person. If this gets approved, they would combine those lots. There's like three different 40-acre parcels and it'd combine them into two lots and thus not increase density. It is in the middle of an area that fore services to the west. There is no other suburban residential or even low-density residential district in this area. If it were to be rezoned, that would be an option. It would be spot zoning because there is no other LDR within about three miles of this area. So they're really, if they were to get and allow this to be deeded, there would be no other, no other LDR in this area. As you can see here, the nearest limited ag is to the north and that's the lighter, darker green. It's surrounded by general ag. There is some red in there. That is highway service. That is the current location of the Cosmos. There are other lot sizes in the area that are below the 10, are the 40 acres. So it wouldn't be the only smaller lot in the area.
So where's the other land that they're going to build this resort on?
This is where they most recently got their conditional use permit for the recreational resort. They're putting, I believe, 10 smaller cabins, vacation home rentals on that property. And this is the portion they want to buy. Cosmos Road comes in here. This is the Cosmos right here.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve variance 14-21 as asked for by the applicant.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to come out of Board of Adjustment.
Motion is second to adjourn as a Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, next item is the Planning and Zoning Consent Calendar, or Consent Agenda.
The Board of Commissioners uses the Consent Agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The Consent Agenda is acted upon by one motion and a vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the Consent Agenda and placed on a regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. The Consent Agenda for the Planning and Zoning contains the following items. I just got a request from Brittany to pull the agreements, items one through 13, 10, and have those continued to the next meeting. We'll bring that up as a separate item. But to, but approve the Spring Creek Watershed Management Project Implementation Plan. Actually, that would be the one that would be removed. But to approve the changes to the Spring Creek Watershed Implementation Project Stormwater Application Rankings and approval of the changes to the Spring Creek 319 Cost List and Cost Share Rates and approval of the Spring Creek Watershed Management Project Implementation Plan 2, Plan Update, Minor Budget Changes, and approval as are recommended. So it'd be, the Consent Agenda would include 11 through 13.
Okay, we should have a motion, I think, first to defer items one through 10 in order to officially.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Now, items 11 through 12, or 13 are on the Consent Agenda. Does anyone wish any of those items removed?
In view of my earlier request for removal, I'd like these three items removed. Thank you.
How critical are they, Brittany? 11, 12, and 13?
It's just to pull them off the consent calendar, isn't it?
11, 12, and 13, the rankings and the cost share rates are what we use to base funding our projects. There's some minor changes to them to reflect. We didn't, any of these agreements or the projects prior, we did not use these two. These are for moving forward. So, and then as far as the plan update, I mean, that's just required because of the applications we received to reflect.
Motions made by the Spring Creek Task Force?
Right, but these are things that basically that they can recommend to you, but no matter what they decide, you guys still have to approve these regardless.
So we'd have it two-week because it's a recommendation?
You could. Well, it depends on whether the task force is a task force or an advisory group or what that issue is.
So, so Mr. Chair, if we're pulling this, this, those three items off the consent calendar, then what, then we would just discuss them individually? Is that, is that the plan?
That's correct. So.
They don't have to be pulled.
Huh?
They don't have to be pulled either way, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. We will proceed. Item 11.
Do we need to move them off of the?
Make a motion to continue items one through 10?
I'd make a motion to continue items one through 10 as asked for by the staff.
We did, didn't we?
I think we already did that.
Did we have?
But, but we haven't made a motion on what to do with 11, 12, 13.
We didn't have a vote on that, did we?
So the approval of changes of the Spring Creek Watershed Implementation Project Stormwater Ranking, this ranking, there were some minor changes to the ranking sheet and those changes include under item one.
Don't we need to pull 11, 12, if we're going to discuss them, 11, 12, and 13 from the Consent Agenda before we proceed with, yeah?
Are you saying we need a motion to do that?
I, I think so. I, I'm just looking at what these ladies are.
Okay. To do it or not to do it?
Okay.
So I, I, did you make a motion, Ken, or?
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay. I would make a motion to pull items 11, 12, and 13 from the Consent Agenda.
Well, I don't frankly, I mean, it's fine. I don't think you need a, a motion. I think you can do it. Any of us can pull anything off the Consent Calendar we want. So if you want to take 11, 12, and 13 off, I think they're off, aren't they? Isn't that the way we do it?
Okay. But we haven't.
I mean, I don't mind a motion either. I'll second it, Brittany.
Okay, we got that sorted out. We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Item 11.
Is approval of changes to the Spring Creek Watershed Implementation Project Stormwater Application Ranking. This was a recommendation to change this ranking to, because of going out and looking at some of our stormwater projects or proposed projects, there were some items that weren't addressed on our ranking sheet. We did not rank the previous ones to the new ranking. It was ranked with the old one. But there was a couple of things that were added to that and under items one and two, the types of basically receiving waters, the type of connection, whether it was impervious or pervious, meaning was there vegetation or was there pavement essentially? And was there any other ones, Pete, that you had added in there in addition to? And being able to rank them because they weren't identified prior.
So essentially, you're making your ranking tool more comprehensive?
Correct.
Any other comments or thoughts on the part of the commission? Any other comments from anyone?
As I mentioned when the meeting started, I asked for this item to be removed from the agenda, this item and the other 12 items under 18C. I'm not here to talk about the merits, lack of, or the merits of, of the item under discussion. What I'm talking about is this item is improperly before you because the task force was not formed according to law. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion relative to item 11?
I would make a motion to approve item 11 as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed four to one. Item 12.
Item 12 is approval of changes to Spring Creek 319 Cost List and Cost Share Rates. Under this item, there was a couple of things added. Under the filter strip, we differentiated between agricultural and urban. The urban practice we took from the EPA's suggested rate of 20,000 per acre. There was the pest man, or pet waste stations were added at a cost rate of 2, 50% of $200. And then there was, there were several stormwater BMPs added, the stormwater infiltrator, the stormwater infiltration basin, and the stormwater infiltration trench, and the vegetated swales were added to reflect BMPs that could be used as part of the project that weren't currently on the cost share list.
And these, right, and these changes are coming from where?
These changes actually were coming from staff. We had suggested them, or I should say the project officers, myself and Pete, based upon our visits to properties and the type of upon our visits to properties and the type of applications that we received, and the type of BMPs that are allowed under the program. We just didn't have them in our cost share and cost list rates, and in order for us to propose those BMPs, they need to be on an approved list by you.
This, this kind of a document, though, is generated from cost experiences through NRCS and other agencies that are involved with these kind of practices?
Correct.
You just didn't invent it yourself?
No, we did not.
And I, I guess I haven't quite got it straightened out in my mind yet. If, frankly, I, I have a problem, kind of like Georgia, if, if it's not a legally constituted board, I have question on whether we should be passing stuff. But is this from you, or is this from you through the task force? I mean, are they, did they recommend this?
They, yes, they did.
So, you, you originated it, but...
Correct.
Said, okay, yeah.
It was presented to them as part of the, the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve item number twelve as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion is second. Any further comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And the reason I'm doing this is because I haven't been provided any legal opinion from our attorney as whether or not there is a problem with the task force, so I'm moving forward with the assumption that, that the task force is legal, and if it's not, and we have to back up and do this over later on, we can do it then. But if it is, then we're progressing forward.
Let me repeat for the record, this item is not properly before you. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I agree with Commissioner Holloway. I'll still vote against it because I don't think there's any emergency to do this, and we'd as well find out the answer before we proceed with it. If it was emergency and we had to have it done this week, that might be a different story.
Any other comments? I think, I think you'll find that these kinds of lists and the rates are used almost universally, at least relative to these kinds of projects. If they weren't invented by the task force, they would exist whether we had a task force or not, in terms of meeting the requirements from higher up relative to carrying out these projects, and to spend time determining whether or not these are legitimate. I guess you'd, you'd need to go to peer, find out who else is using similar lists, and go from there, but I think this is just sort of an exercise. Anyway, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. One, one no vote. Next item, item thirteen.
Item thirteen is approval of the Spring Creek Watershed Management Project Implementation Plan Segment Two Plan Update with minor budget changes. The changes were made based upon the applications that we had received. The changes are, a few of them are in the body of the text, under the section for Task One, to reflect the number of riparian projects we have received, in addition to the funding that's required for them. So basically, the changes are only in Objective One, Task One. And Tables six-one, six-two, and six-three were amended to reflect our receipt of those applications.
So if we have not approved those agreements, then does that really make this valid?
Yeah, I mean, we could bring it back and change. If you guys don't approve, I mean, there's no guarantee that you'll approve all of them or some of them, and you may approve them, we would have to change, change it. It's a, a document that changes often as planned, so it can change twenty times in the course of a year, or it just depends on what your guys, or what's approved throughout the project and what applications we receive. So I put this together based upon the applications that we have received.
I'd make a motion to approve item thirteen as presented.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Discussion.
For the record, once again, I object because this item is not properly, properly before the Board. Now, there's this thing called, a notion that we have in this nation called precedence, and with all due respect to those before me, Supreme Court of South Dakota said twenty years ago, twenty years ago come December, that the rule of law should be followed. In that particular case, the merits weren't at issue. As I recall reading the case, number, any number of times, what was not before the court was the merits of the underlying issue. What was before the court was the rule of law. Let's follow the rule of law. Thank you.
Would you care to quote the law that you're talking about?
It just happened to involve planning and zoning. In nineteen ninety-two, an individual was, for lack of a better word, harassed by Pennington County Planning and Zoning. He took, he challenged that, that ruling, told away the Supreme Court. We took the Circuit Court, and he prevailed in Circuit Court. And he said that planning and zoning ordinance was invalid because it was improperly noticed. The law was not followed. Just a simple technicality, the law was not followed. It was Moore versus Pennington County. Okay? The Supreme Court said, this is not about merit, this is about the issue of notice. One twenty-five-one says, "The task force appointed, created by statute, ordinance, resolution." It's my understanding at last meeting, unless I didn't hear right, you did it by motion. You didn't follow the law. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Actually, nineteen ninety-four.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. Okay, that completes planning and zoning. Item nineteen, Black Hills Association of County Commissioners. Who's in charge of that discussion?
You are.
No, 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 you brought it on the agenda.
The what? This is just, this is just stuff that was done yesterday at the meeting.
No, this is your item.
Oh, you're talking, I see nothing on it, you're talking about from Minnehaha County? Oh, okay. It's not on there. I, I guess I didn't see that. Basically, what that was is that, here the other day, I was reading the Superhole's Argus Leader, and it came to my attention that Minnehaha County is not real happy with the Association of County Commissioners, the way it's being implemented and the way it's being run in the state of South Dakota. And they, they talked about in there that they can't seem to get anything through the Association, that last year, I guess they put several resolutions in front of the Resolution Board, and one of them had to do with a, putting a liquor tax in, in place of some property tax and other things, as I understand. I guess I never heard about it last year, but they did put a liquor tax, or attempted to put a liquor tax through, but it was turned down by the Resolution Board, and so basically, what they're saying, one of them mentioned that maybe we should, and I'm quoting what the paper said, that they tell the Association that they're getting a little fed up. One of the other Commissioners said that maybe they should withdraw their membership from the Association. And basically, what's happening is, as I understand, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that Pennington County and Minnehaha County are guaranteed one seat at the Board without an election or anything else, just one of those, one member from each of those counties. The other eight are on that Board are from the other smaller counties, and they seem to be out voting about anything that takes place with any of the bigger counties. And one of the complaints, as I understand from reading that article and talking to a couple of the Commissioners, is that they, the smaller counties didn't think that they were getting a fair shake with monies that may be coming through for things like this. But, you know, my suggestion would be that if you got a hundred thousand people in Pennington County, Pennington County should get more money from liquor tax than Bute County, or Lawrence County, or Mead County. That's just natural progression of things. That's, that's how things work. But I know that we pulled out, at least once and maybe twice, out of the Association, basically for these same reasons, that we couldn't get anything through them. So I had a couple of their Commissioners call me, and I made it very plain, and I made it very plain yesterday when I talked in front of the Association meeting in Sturgis, that I was speaking for myself at that time and not for this Commission. But I'm not too sure that it's not a bad idea to start having a little more conversation with some of the bigger counties, and Minnehaha, Brown, and others, to make things happen a little better for the entire state. And as you know, we've tried to get a liquor tax through several different times, and it's been beaten down, and I even had the President of the organization tell me from a very small county, says, "Our law enforcement budget is only thirty thousand dollars a year, so why should we care what happens to Pennington County?" And that was his exact statement from the President of the organization. I, I don't know what this all means, but I, I think that maybe we should deal a little better with Minnehaha and Brown and others, and they seem to want to have that conversations with us by talking to a couple of their Commissioners. So, that's where I'm at.
Well, Minnehaha County has other problems than what, what the Association is causing them. They, they propose a bunch of things because they're broke and, and can't, and it's only going to get worse because they spend too much money. And some of the proposals they had, the liquor tax, great idea, someone's got to come up with a really good proposal because the ones that, that I've seen that the Association has asked to, to endorse will never pass. The Governor has made it clear, the Legislature has made it clear, we, so we've got to come up with a, a really good idea, and, and I can tell you, the one thing that you're against, Ken, is a, is a wheel tax, and, and I can't say that I'm in favor of it, but, but every time we go to the Legislature and say, "We need more money," the first thing they ask is, "Have you, we gave you the authority for a wheel tax. Have you done that?" Nope. Don't come back and ask us for money. That's, I mean, that's, that's the extent of the conversation. So, yeah.
What I've said about the liquor tax all along is that I don't think Ma and Paul, sitting at home twice a week, have a glass of wine, sitting at the kitchen table, should be paying through their property tax for the amount of law enforcement it takes to take care of alcohol-related subjects in Pennington County. I think that Pennington County, if we, if we ever did get a liquor tax passed, it should have something to do with supplementing or reducing property tax. Now, I understand Minnehaha County, right now, is working on their budget, I guess they haven't asked for seventy-four million dollars from the budget, and they have sixty-eight million dollars to do the budget in. So yes, I understand totally what you're saying. But still, I don't think that people, older folks or anybody that's paying property tax should pay for taking care of somebody that goes out and gets drunk three times a week or winds up and getting ten DUIs or even two DUIs. I think that the problem, thing that's causing the problem should be paid in its way instead of the property tax people in Pennington County.
There's nobody that, there's nobody in this state that's going to deny that.
Yep.
Unless they're down to bar right now, maybe, they might not like it, but, but everybody agrees with that, but to relate that to the Association and getting out of that is, is a very large step.
But the only thing that I would add to that is, is the sixty-sixth counties will get together and say, "Hey, legislator, we need this done." I think if we go a lot further in getting it done than, than us going down there, or Minnehaha going down by themselves, it's just like the last one we tried. The Association flat shot it down, never even went to the Resolutions Committee. And I just mentioned, the Chairman of the, of the Association did it on his own, killed it, flat there. You know, I guess, I'm wondering who Bob Wilcox is working for? Is he working for somebody that has a budget of a hundred thousand dollars, or is he working for a budget, somebody that's got eighty-six million? So I guess that's kind of what I'm wondering about. We never seem to get it any further than just them, and they, they just wipe it off.
That's, argument is, is as old as this country, and that's why we have a House of Representatives based on population, and we have a Senate based on how many states there are. And if you can come up with some formula like that for the Association, I, it probably would pass.
Well, as mentioned the other day by one of the Minnehaha County Commissioners, that maybe we should get together and have a bigger county association, and I feel, and I'm speaking for myself on this, that if Pennington County would spend five thousand dollars hiring a pipeline lobbyist, we'd get a heck of a lot more out of it than we're getting out of Bob Wilcox and his organization, and it'd cost a whole lot less money, and we'd have about ten, twelve thousand dollars left over from the, from the tax rate that we wouldn't have to tax them for, for our membership.
Could be, and I haven't checked lately, but I think the cost of a lobbyist is eight to ten thousand a year, not five.
Well, I think we paid, the Chamber one paid the last year five thousand bucks for part-time.
Okay, do we have any further resolutions that we want to talk about? We did adopt some last time.
We had a, a meeting of the Black Hills Association yesterday. I'll do that, well, you're going to have committees yet, aren't you? Okay, never mind.
Okay, move on to items from the chair. The only thing I would have to report is that the Hawthorne Ditch Committee met. I sat in for Commissioner Troutman, their, Tina was there. Do you have anything, comments you want to make about the meeting, Tina?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you. I think the pieces are sort of coming together to mobilize a planning process. Dale Tech was there from the city, and Howard Rice, and Arrowbees, and, and our people, planning and zoning, so I think it was a productive meeting. That's all I have, and so we'll move into committee reports. Any...
I, I can give a quick one. Black Hills Association met yesterday in Sturgis. We presented our resolutions, our two resolutions, the fireworks one and the ag one, and both were passed unanimously. So now they go to the, the State Board, and, well, they'll get passed there, I'm sure, and then to the convention for the final approval before it goes to a legislature. So we'll have to find a, a legislator to, to run with them, but...
We did the fireworks one, we did...
The fireworks, yeah, I'm sorry. The fireworks one got amended to take out sale, so it's now just regulate the use. I think the thinking was, there's a lot of sales along the interstate, out of town, out of state people, and that probably wouldn't fly, so they figured that just the use would have a stand a better chance.
My, my thoughts about it is that the state would not want to lose the sales tax of, of all those sales, so we're better off not to even go there.
I know, that's, but of course, yeah, like you said about fireworks, but...
Yep.
Uh, let's see, what else? And the other resolution that got passed was, there was, Harding County had, I think, there's some questions on mineral rights, and if there's not, if they can't find the not, if they can't find the person who owns the land, there's a provision of law that a trustee gets the money. And they were worried that they would start appointing trustees in Sioux Falls, because the trustee gets half of the money. And so, Harding County wanted to make sure they kept the trustee in Harding County, which I think is a good idea.
Yep.
We also have the one about the road.
Oh, yeah. Meade County has a, has a road that they're spending a lot of money to keep fixing up because it, it seems to be a very convenient way for trucks on their way to North Dakota to bypass the scales. And so, they want to have a resolution to turn it into a state highway as long as, let the state maintain it, not, not the county, so.
I would point out that in years past, Elmer Flat and I sponsored a bill that would, the traffic count on the road would decide whether it belonged to the state or the county in automatic, and, and the contractors jumped on that like ducks on a June bug, and it died.
But they did have, that was part of their presentation, was the traffic count. I mean, it was considerable.
And I still think it's right.
Yep.
Because the state is responsible for the transportation system, which includes...
And, and they pointed out that between Sturgis and Fort Pierre, was it? 193, 135 miles, there's no state highway that goes north and south.
Okay, any other committee reports?
Just quickly, I brought it up several different times, but the Air Force sponsored the Tops in Blue concert at the Civic Center here a week, about a week ago, and it was a fabulous concert. And they put it on for no cost to the public, and everybody was, it was open to the public to come in and go, and the theater was full. So, yep.
Anyone else?
I just want to mention to the commission that on the 29th, the state is doing their annual STIP meeting, and it's at 7:00 PM up at the Ram Cota. It's kind of good to figure out what they're going to do with their funding, what their plan is for the next several years. So, if anyone's interested in going, they might want to put that on their schedule.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, I'd like to mention something about that, and it's always been a pet peeve of mine. And now the state is trying more and more to put more and more dollars into building bicycle lanes. And the bicycles, they're, they don't have any license plates, they don't have any insurance, there's no way to identify them if they cause an accident, and they pay absolutely no road taxes. But we're spending millions and millions of dollars in this state building bicycle lanes. And as far as I'm concerned, when they start paying taxes on building roads, it's lanes for themselves, then, then we can go ahead and start building them. But I think it's wrong that we're spending tax money off of fuel tax to, to build bicycle lanes.
Well, I agree with you. It's a federal situation, they pass that on down.
Yeah, but we always complain about, maybe we've got to tell the feds that we're tired of that pass down. Here it is, take it back.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more thing.
Yes.
On July 30th, I have a meeting in Pier. I was asked to be on a committee to review the, our liability insurance and, what else, something else. She was going to send me a list of what we're doing from the, the private company that Higgins that run it. And it's just to review it and see if we need to do something different, what our request would be to them. So, I'm going to be talking to some people in the county here to find out if they have any, any things they'd like to see different. And they pay all the expenses, so it don't cost us anything.
Okay, thank you. Items from the public.
Good morning. I can't believe that.
Neither can we.
I just got, this is Dan Richer. Mr. Commissioner, I've got three things. Tops in Blue, they are fantastic. Just one thing, if you missed the concert, you may not see another one. They're starting to drop whole aircraft systems, so I'm sure recruiting is going to start getting cut, too. And Tops in Blue is part of recruiting. The other thing is, I want to, to, just food for thought, on these septic systems. In the septic ordinance, it's, says that any sensitive areas or areas over aquifers and that will be prioritized. We're now four years into it, and I, you know, have these ones that are coming up, that are along these stream beds and all that, for the taxpayers to pay for, have they been inspected? And if they have, have they been given waivers not to repair them for a couple of years until they get around to them? Or any of that? Because your own ordinance says you'll prioritize it, I'm sorry, Pennington County ordinance says you'll prioritize it by sensitive areas and/or all of our aquifers. Thank you.
Anyone else?
To add on to, to what Dan was saying, or to follow on or piggyback with what he was saying is, at the Spring Creek Task Force meeting Wednesday, I wanted to ask about the five septic onsite wastewater systems that were approved. I wanted to ask, how many of those five received letters? And were denied public discussion? So, that's another reason for pulling those items off the agenda. Anyway, anyway, that aside, can we find out, can you folks find out for Dan and I, and the rest of citizens of Pennington County, if those five septics, in fact, all the septics, and I've suggested before, pick a distance from the creek, and all those tributaries, pick a distance, and send all those folks a letter if they haven't already received a letter? Why haven't they, after four years, if, those have to be sensitive areas. If they're qualified for EPA funds, they've got to be sensitive. If they receive letters, what's been their response? What's the status of those letters? What's the status of those septic systems? What kind of games are we playing? Speaking of games, believe it or not, memories evidently are really, really short. This young guy from Respec talked about confidentiality. And what he did, I thought of Don Holloway. Don Holloway's question, "Can't we know what this project of Lowry's and Luden's are that are?" And the answer was no. Don Holloway asked the big guy that's standing here, "You will not, or you can't?" He said, "I can't because confidentiality." Well, I dispelled that rumor because of NRCS. I got a letter that says, "They're not confidential." But here's the rock shop in Hill City, $50,000, 10 for riparian, 40 for stormwater. Now, when the hell stormwater in here in this picture, I don't know. But anyway, $50,000. This young Respec guy said, "I can't tell you the details of that project because of confidentiality." It's unreal. What are we doing the project for in the first place but it's confidential? The guy from DNR was here, I understand he made a special trip to talk about good people. Well, if this Respec guy's a good people, he would know the confidentiality thing, just, just a year ago. Just a year ago, that happened. They're good people. You folks signed a contract, this commission signed a contract four years ago, to have stormwater plan, septic onsite wastewater plan, and strategic plan done by June of 2012. Here it is, July of 2014. Respec told the group that gathered down in the basement Wednesday that those plans are almost done. Almost done. Is this real? You know, are we living in a real world or not? And let me leave you with this. Can, can you imagine not having oversight on project, any government project? Oversight by definition is required. The last couple articles, the last couple of weeks, there's been two missile articles in the Rapid City Journal. And I go back to my days, and, and as I told you folks, a bunch of lieutenant, young lieutenants and captains in charge of the news. Can you imagine those folks not having oversight? Everything humans do needs oversight. The marketplace oversees us by the greenbacks. The dollars are oversight. But when it comes to government, you have to have people. Thank you.
Do we have any items, anyone else? If not, do we have any executive session items?
Make a motion to go into executive session, Mr. Chair.
There's no items.
It's not on the agenda.
There isn't? We got it right here. Well, I withdraw my motion.
Failed for lack of a second, anyway.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a second on that one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.